Testing, one, two, three. Testing. Yeah, okay.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the City Council, February 18, '25. The action item tonight is the Coverley Visioning Workshop. And would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Here.
Councilmember Rektal?
Here.
Mayor Lowing?
Here.
Councilmember Burt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Here.
Councilmember Lou?
Here.
For the record, six present. Councilmember Stone is absent.
Okay, thank you. Comments tonight from the public will be only on the agendized items, so we'll get to that shortly. Before that, I do have one comment from sort of the mayor's perspective. I was contacted by a member of the public who attended a vigil, a demonstration outside of City Hall on Saturday that went on for a few hours. And distressingly, there were many statements of antisemitism and also vulgar and derogatory language addressed toward our police department. So I just want to reiterate that we on council fully support the rule of law and we support free speech as documented in the First Amendment. But hate really has no place in Palo Alto. Our community always stands for inclusion and respect, and we reject all forms of hatred and bigotry. Council and public safety officers will continue to remain vigilant in fostering safe and open communication in a welcoming environment for everybody in our city regardless of their backgrounds or beliefs. And we're going to continue to stand against antisemitism and all acts of hate against any group because our strength is really in our diversity, which frankly, we're trying to increase in our shared commitment to human dignity. So I ask all of our citizens to practice these values with all of their neighbors. Thank you. Okay, should we turn it over to our consultant who's going to be the facilitator and get to work? Oh, City Manager, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll just get us kicked off this evening. Thank you for your comments. As you noted, tonight's session is regarding our Coverley project, and we're in for a treat. This will be very different in terms of a city council meeting and hope that you find it to be both engaging as well as energizing. The, in some ways, this is a reintroduction for us, having done a master planning effort at the Coverley site several years ago, and so really kicking that effort back up. At the same time, it's really a result of the city councils energizing, re-energizing this effort by entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Palo Alto Unified School District. And so in some ways, tonight represents something of a handoff, that we are now moving from the actions taken by the city council to bring this project back to the fore and as we'll be entering into our community engagement process. In so doing, really provides an opportunity for the city council to set the tone by having a discussion of the big visions, big expectations, and really setting forward the city's aspirations as we move into this next phase of community engagement. So with that, let me ask our Director of Community Services, Kristin O'Kane, to lead us through the initial introductory information.
Good evening. I'm Kristin O'Kane, Community Services Director. So I'd like to first introduce our consultant team Concordia, who's with us tonight. So we have Bobby Hill, Stephen Bingler, George Silvertooth, and Elizabeth Chen. They'll be guiding you through the vision activity and exercise this evening. Before we get started, I just wanted to review what our goals were for the evening. So Madam Clerk, if you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So our goal tonight is to really generate a vision statement, and this is a statement from the City Council that reflects the values and opportunities that Coverley represents to you and to all of Palo Alto. And this is a vision that is relevant today but will also be relevant at some point in the future and will support and really ignite and kick off the community engagement master planning process. So this is just one of many sessions and opportunities for the community to weigh in on this process. This is really kicking it off. At the end of the presentation, Concordia will share our next steps and what the next meetings planned are. But again, this is just the very first step to kick off the process. Once we have the visioning, vision statement, we'll take this to the first community meeting, which is on March 19th, and just validate that with the public and the community so we get the alignment between the community members and the council members. So with that, I am going to turn the floor over to our consultant team.
I just wanted to ask your judgment on when's the best time to get public comment? We can do it after part of the staff presentation or we can get it right up front?
My recommendation is to have them go through some of the slides that they will share sort of the foundation that we're building all this on, then pause, do the community comment, and then do the visioning session so that helps inform your outcome as well.
Great. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So I will turn it over to Elizabeth to start the presentation.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so as was mentioned, there will be a set of community meetings that would be, that will be an iterative process, and they're really integral to this process. So you can see, we started off this phase of the Coverley plan back in December. We had a series of kickoff meetings. We're here at the community vision session. And then right after that community vision session, you can see those three community meetings. And like was mentioned, these are great opportunities for public comments. Invite all of your friends, come yourselves, and this is a really great place to, where we get public insight about the process. The reason that we have so many community meetings is because it's a really, it's really an iterative process, so you can see where we are in the process and we can get your insight at every stage of the process. Some important dates to note are at the end of the year, we will have wrapped up this Coverley planning process. But in May of 2026, council will approve the plan, and then y'all will see it on the ballots in November of 2026. Madam Clerk, next slide, please. Thank you. It's really important to also note that we are not starting from scratch. The 2025 Coverley plan rests on some big foundational pillars. So as was mentioned, one of those really big foundational pillars is the 2019 planning process. That planning process, just as a reminder, involves the school district. The reason that we're here today is because the school district is no longer a primary stakeholder, so we are revisiting the plans for Coverley. That said, there's still very valuable lessons that we've learned and that we've heard from the process. So you can see, back in 2018 and 19, there were four community meetings. We gathered a lot of information from that, and a lot of the lessons are still incredibly integral to the process now and still valid. Next slide, please. From that 2019 planning process were derived goals and visions. So one of, so the goal for the process was to collaboratively develop a community vision for Coverley that's innovative, flexible, and adaptable. I would like to highlight that the collaboration and community part really speak to Concordia's value of co-designing processes with stakeholders, with community members as an integral part of the process. And the vision for the community center was for a multicultural and multi-generational learning environment that supports visual and performing arts and prioritizes wellness, not just physical wellness, but social, emotional, and mental illness as well. Next slide, please. Thank you. And just touching again about that co-design process that we hold so dear, some of the guidelines that came out of the process, the community-led design guidelines, were for lots of shared use to maximize green space, to encourage multimodal transit for wellness, to make sure that we're considering parking, and to create a really welcoming and multi-generational space. Okay, next slide, please. Thank you. And then another pillar, a foundational pillar that we're, that we're using as a guideline for this process is to tie into the newly released 2025 council priorities that I know y'all just worked on. So we definitely see Coverley as tying into those goals and being mutually supportive. Next slide, please. And the last foundational pillar I'll talk about today is just data. From every meeting that we conduct, from this council vision session and from previous documents, we collect data. It goes into, you know, a long spreadsheet or a word bank, and it helps us make sure that we're synthesizing themes that we hear from everybody and to make sure that those themes get integrally put into the planning process. Okay, I'm going to hand it to Stephen to talk a little bit more about the Concordia process.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We're so happy to be back here in this room and participating in this new process. How many people in this room participated in some way in the previous meetings? Yay! So you know a little bit about how we work. We do a little bit differently. We've learned a lot over the years. We've been doing planning, community-centered planning for 40 years now. So over that time, you know, most planning starts with the programmatic planning, and the first thing that people want to do is to see what's it going to look like? How big is it going to be? How many square feet is it going to be? What's it going to look like? So it's mostly physical planning. Our experience over the years has taken us into a much more systemic way of thinking about planning, and so we don't just do physical planning because we also want to be sure that we are hearing all of the messages from the various cultural institutions and ethnicities and different perspectives that exist in the community. So we want to hear, we want to do cultural planning or integrate the notion of cultural planning into the process as well. So that's the second one of our domains of planning, of which there are six. We've also learned that while we're planning the physical, we can also be thinking about the social. We can think about health and wellness and things that a project can do that doubles down on, you know, maybe the same, the same square footage that can be used for a cultural event could also be used to support some social program. So in addition to that, we're also thinking about economics. We're thinking, first of all, obviously, how much does it cost and is it efficient? But also environmentally, how much energy is it going to consume? So how can we make it the most efficient it can possibly be? And if you remember part of, some of the concepts in the previous plan, we actually ended up having a lot of shared spaces that saved taxpayers like $140 million. So we're always going to be looking for those opportunities to do something that's a win-win so that we're not just getting one benefit, maybe we're getting two or three different benefits for the same physical space. And the, next to the last domain that we always include is organizational domain, and we, for that, we know that there are a lot of organizations in the community who are passionate about parks and recreation programming. We've already met with the vendors on the site and started to get their input, and we're going to circle back with them many times, and also new vendors. And so we want you to help us figure out how we can connect with the most number of organizations in the community that have a stake in this project. And lastly, is education. Now, last time, we actually were looking at including schools, but just because we're not designing schools doesn't mean the process can't be educational. Not only is the process itself educational, but also, and we've designed recreational projects where the whole site becomes a three-dimensional textbook, where, you know, you can learn from what is a solar panel and why do we have solar panels and what's that solar panel doing? So they're, we actually can put plaques around so the site itself can become a kind of a three-dimensional textbook, if you will. So I don't want to go into any details on these things because we will be doing that as a part of our as a part of our engagement process. But I wanted to give you a broad overview, that we're going to be doing physical, cultural, social, economic, organizational, and educational planning, all at the same time. And it's going to come out at the end as a whole system, as opposed to just a building, or a collection of three-dimensional spaces. In addition to that, and if, can you have the next slide? In addition to that, all six of those domains of planning will be filtered through three other buckets. One of them is a bucket that's place, the place itself. How many square feet? Where, how are those various programs organized on the site in the most efficient way? What kind of circulation systems do we have? Do we, are we sure that we have all the different modes of transportation included? The second thing is the programmatic piece. What's actually happening in each one of those spaces in terms of recreation or content? And the third piece is always the policy piece. We're hoping that, or we're actually planning, because we've been given direction by some of the council members, that we want this to be a world-class project. We want, we don't want to just assume we're going to do everything we did last time. You know, we want to be sure that there are things that come out of this process that could actually be replicated in other centers around the city. And we've already started to look at a few of those things that could be actually beneficial, that maybe it gets implemented the first time in this process, but it's something that could serve the entire community. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to Bobby Hill, who you'll remember very well from my last time. So here's Bobby.
Christian, are we going to do the public comment, or now or after?
I think now would be an appropriate time to do that.
Okay, great. Clerk can manage that.
Mayor, we currently have five requests to speak. Would you like to do three minutes? Our first speaker is Olivia Y.
City Council members, Coverly, and Bobby, and Stephen, and your team. We are the Children's Preschool Center in Palo Alto, the, one of the oldest childcare centers in Palo Alto, definitely the largest. And how we became that way was the incredible commitment by the city of Palo Alto to make sure that if we're going to attract big business, and Stanford and all of its graduates into the workforce, that they need a place of very high-quality care. And Children's Preschool Center has been committed to that, living on the Coverly campus for the last 40 years. So I want to first acknowledge the wisdom to bring back Bobby and her team. I think last time in 2019, if I'm not mistaken, it concluded the ability to bring people together and to find real solutions that meet, kind of as Stephen spoke, not just a building. But this is, Coverly is a unique place, not just for childcare, but also for the unique Chinese library that's on campus, nowhere else, probably in the country, to be found, along with many other places. And not just that, but there is the affordable component. And so I hope that what we create is something that is, also translates that those who are living there now, those beautiful artists who volunteer and come to even places like us to help with artwork and things like that, still become part of the priority of the fabric of the new Coverly. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth A., followed by Tara D.
Good evening, council. I'm delighted to be here talking about Coverly again. I'm speaking for myself tonight. I do think we should be rethinking the concept from 2019. A lot of things have changed. I mean, we have changed, the city has changed. It's no longer a school. We have new plans for a much more dense area. You know, personally, I'm looking toward things that feel a little bit more organic, a little bit more creative, less of a planned community, and more of a district. You know, thinking about a way that, you know, even reconceptualizing the role of the city in this. Is the city the builder, or is the city the sort of the owner of the property, or even maybe just a ground lease? We are going to get into some challenging issues. It's easy to offer all sorts of great organizations, cheap space, and a cheap rundown one, but, you know, $1,200 a square foot space, I think there are going to be some complicated conversations. And thinking of this more as like a small urban area and less of a project, I think might be a beneficial way. One thing I would, if it hasn't been done, I have never seen an inventory of assets in the different categories that we have on these sheets. What is here in the city? Have we done a swat on that? What is missing? You know, I always come back to, well, anyway, I will not bug you about my mini golf kind of obsession, but yes, there are, just in the sense that we are missing lots of opportunities for kids to, kids to socialize and adults to socialize, you know, and these spaces are disappearing and disappearing fast. But I do think, just coming back to this, we need, it's going to get complicated as we have, the city is not the tenant in most of these spaces. It's not a community center. And I think taking that very seriously is an opportunity to come up with something that's really interesting and world-class.
Our next speaker is Tara D., followed by Arthur K.
Thank you. My name is Tara Delagarza. I'm a tenant at Coverly. I have been for the past seven years in the Coverly Artist Studio Program. I think that I have a perspective on it that is somewhat unique. And what we have enjoyed as tenants there, as artists in the program, is an interaction with the community through our open studio programs, and also helping out various other tenants with their projects. And what I would like to see moving forward is integrating the different aspects together, so having collaborative spaces. For example, I often utilize the Maker Space, that is currently a very unique place that's run by teens. And that kind of dialogue that we can have with each other, I'd like to see that included in a future building. Also, I'd like to emphasize that the building right now is an absolute treasure that we could be doing a lot of things with right now. And that's something that we've formed a group for called Coverly Now. And we would like to see things like festivals happening there. There are these wonderful outdoor spaces that are covered, that could be utilized for markets. And all of these things could potentially bring revenue that would help to provide resources for creating things like festivals. For example, we could have a very easy-to-create and quick-to-build mural festival that could happen in 2026. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Arthur K., followed by Rebecca M.
Some of you may remember the previous incarnation of that, which was very successful until it failed because, primarily because a single council member decided to intervene in proposed housing, which the entire audience did not like, mostly the audience did not like. Fortunately, you have rolled out housing from this, because we've built around housing on San Antonio Road area. But no housing in this area, just to reiterate. Second thing is that I'd like to talk about a, we should have a large room like this, with a kitchen, a large enough kitchen to cook things on. There's, some of you may remember that Avinida's used to, that La Comida used to serve lunches to, once a week there, at Coverly, before changes happened. Then we moved, when we were creating lunches downtown, we were bringing some over to Coverly. Instead, what happened is that, a lot of changes happened. Now we're cooking at Stephen's house. If possible, we'd like to be able to cook at, instead at, for lunches at a place at, at La Comida at Coverly, which is a lot easier to get to than Stephen's house. So that's possibility. I'm not saying we're moving away from Stephen's house, but there's a possibility of, there's a need for large room, large multi-purpose room with a kitchen nearby, so you can actually cook things on it. So I recommend that. Thirdly, I'd like to talk about, there's a couple of needs that are not being served very well right now, which is the, there's a couple of gyms there that are in very bad shape. So I hope that that will be rebuilt and made in good shape, because there's something happened to the floor, leaky, I don't know. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rebecca M., followed by Shawnee K.
Hello. I also appreciate this meeting, and was a part of the 2019 discussions. And like the gentleman before, did not appreciate how everything kind of fell apart with the housing at the end. And this public land is really, really special, and there's a lot of other places we can do housing. And if we lose it to housing, we'll never get it back. So I would like to make sure we have enough discussions that we're not putting housing back on the plan. Another thing that were, important things that I think everyone was aligned with last time was keeping the fields, and the importance of having fields, especially in South Palo Alto. Another thing last time that I feel like wasn't totally solved to everybody's satisfaction was how the driving in and out, and especially if you're involving the old church property that is Athena School now, and kind of routing that traffic, especially since we're going to do so much housing building in South Palo Alto, that we really want to consider that as part of the plan. When this first happened, I had young preschool children, now I have middle school and elementary school children. And a lot of the people who are joining us today have probably older kids or adult kids. But if we are building more housing for more people to come, we need more places for children. And while a playground was something that hadn't been discussed before, I think it'd be really great to employ playable spaces, so smaller kind of play areas that, and especially landscaping that's playable, because I think everyone says now, you know, loneliness is the new smoking, and we want to get everybody together and meet different intergenerational groups. And incorporating kids in places is a great way to do that, instead of kind of putting it off to the side. One thing, too, that was talked about was adding a pool, because there's the Renganata Pool, although we're very close to the Palo Alto, I'm sorry, the Mountain View Pool on Shoreline, or, sorry, on Rangstorf. I'm a member of the Green Meadow Pool Association. I live right by Coverly. And something that we were thinking about was how this could affect our membership. And one thing to look at, this pool is a way to differentiate. And I know when I had little, little kids, the pool that was at Abilities United, that was heated for elderly people, children, it was indoor, and then really helped people who had special needs, is something that no longer exists in our community. And that could be a good use for a pool on the site. So thank you very much.
Our final speaker is Shawnee K.
Good evening, Mayor Lauing and council member. My name is Shawnee Kleinhouse. I live in this neighborhood, have been for 20-odd years. I'm a Parks and Recreation Commissioner. I do not speak for the PRC, and I work for the Bird Alliance, and I do not, partially speaking for them. I participated in the last effort. And this time, I think we need to be much humbler. Don't go for maximum FAR. Go for the playgrounds that somebody mentioned here. Look for trees that kids can climb on. It's really important for their development. Look for things that serve the community, rather than square feet, and how tall we can build. Really look at what the community needs, and be humble, because it needs to go to a vote. And it's enough that we have a few people that say, oh, we're getting displaced, and we provide all these services to the community, that the vote gets voted down. So if we want this to move forward, be humble, and look at what are the real needs of the community. And one more thing I'd like to say is that, I don't know if this is going to go to the PRC. As I said, I speak as a, not speaking for the PRC, but I think it should, because if there is outreach, the PRC should be part of that. And the last thing is like, for the Bird Alliance, the last time the designs that came out were Shard City. It was all glass. Please go back to the kind of organic development that used to be in this area. If you build glass, you spend a lot more energy, and you kill a lot more birds than if you have the Spanish kind of Mexican design. Look for that instead of a bird-killing construction. Anyway, and bring back some nature into this. You have an opportunity to do it. Thank you.
And that concludes the public comment on our Coverly Visioning, item one.
Thanks to the public, and back to the consultant.
Well, good evening, everybody. Good evening, City Council, and good evening to all of you. I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, thank you all for your great thoughts and ideas. I want to encourage you to stay in touch and participate in the meetings. The process will be very similar to what we had before, where we want to get as many people in the room actually doing the work and informing the plan. And we appreciate what you said tonight, and are listening very clearly. And I do also want to acknowledge that we did do some asset mapping when we started the previous plan. It's something we will bring back to make sure we are understanding all the programming that exists, where the needs are, and where there would be appropriate duplication, and where there may not need to be duplication. So thank you for that reminder as well. So I do want to let everybody know, this is not your typical city council meeting. We're going to be going through an activity for the city council to develop a vision for what they want Coverly to be. We're going to try to do this in a way, because we understand, you know, the Brown Act, and we have to have everything recorded, and we have to have you all be able to hear what folks say. But we want this to be as conversational as possible. When we do an activity like this with an organization or with a group, it needs to be conversational. It is something that we want the city council to work through together. And then this is something that we will share in the first meeting. So I hope you will be cognizant of that, and appreciate that effort, and that the council will as well. And before we get started on the activity, I want to just ask again, how many of you all attended meetings before? And how about for you, council? How many of you ever came to any of the meetings? Okay, Pat, Pat did. Great. I hope you will all. I know at the time, when the different city council members came and participated in the meetings, I know we have some former city council and mayors here today. There's a lot of wisdom in this room. There's a lot of experience and knowledge that that is what we want to bring forth to the table, because the more information we have, and the more people involved in the process, the better the product will be. There is actually research that proves that if you have a problem that you're solving, and you have 100 or more people in the room, they will come up with a better solution than the smartest person in the room. And we've seen that happen time and time again. So I'm going to invite George Silvertooth, who is our lead storyteller and engagement extraordinaire. And he is going to explain the directions for the activity tonight, and then I will help facilitate that.
Awesome. Thank you, Bobby. Can we have the presentation shared again where we last left off, please? Awesome. And next slide, please. Okay, perfect. So here we are. So I'm going to walk through what this activity is. As Bobby mentioned, we usually like to do, you know, a roundtable sort of activity, and everybody's kind of getting their hands dirty together, creating ideas and all of that. But for this, we decided to do kind But for this, we decided to do kind of a hybrid option. So we have a virtual and simultaneous in-person kind of going at the same time. So Bobby will facilitate. Elizabeth and myself will be taking notes that we will share that screen so that everybody can see what is being written down as the council members brainstorm. So the goal of this activity is to create a Coverley Vision Statement for this updated master plan. And so broad strokes, what we're doing here is first step, brainstorm. Any and all ideas, no wrong answers, just brainstorm anything that might should be included in this vision statement. After that, we're going to prioritize some of those words, which ones are most important, maybe combine some ideas. And then finally, using those kind of as a word bank, we'll craft a vision statement including those words. So it's kind of a structure to get down focused and get us to this vision statement. And again, this vision statement will be brought to the first community engagement meeting. Next slide, please. So first things first, a deep dive into these activity instructions. We will be brainstorming words, phrases, ideas, anything that you feel like can help craft this vision statement. We have our six NEX domains that Stephen described earlier. I want to reiterate over and over and over again, this is a framework for this exercise. So while we will be going through and brainstorming words in each category, this is just to make sure that we are thinking holistically. So this is not a debate about whether the word innovation is more social or more educational. You know, we're not trying to categorize. We're trying to brainstorm. And most words will probably, or ideas will probably fit into multiple NEX domains and that is a good thing. That is an awesome thing. So I just want to reiterate that this framework is just to make sure that we're not leaving any stone unturned. But no rules, any idea, any word, any phrase is absolutely allowed. So that's step one. We'll brainstorm different ideas. Next slide, please. To help with this brainstorm in each domain, and we will be zooming in on these so they will be more legible, we've included previous things, the foundational ideas and vision statements and guidelines and all of that that Elizabeth previously went through. We have those included. We have organized those ourselves. Again, all of these ideas can fit into multiple domains, but we wanted to make sure that we included these. The city council's goals are up there as well. We wanted to include these because we're not starting at square one. We've done this process before and we want to make sure that whatever we should take from the past, we do, and whatever we should leave behind, we do as well. So whenever we're going through each one, make note of what were those previous ideas and maybe make note, oh, I like that, let's take that. That applies to this. Next slide, please. So after the brainstorm, what we're going to do is prioritize. So we're kind of, I like to think of the metaphor where we're chipping away at a block of marble to create the statue. In this case, the statue is a vision statement. So we're going to go from six NEX domains to these three buckets that Stephen talked about, place, policy, and program. Again, this is just a framework to make sure that we're making, that we have everything together for this vision statement. So, you know, we're not going to play semantics with what category it should go into. But the idea here is to take all of these words and prioritize the most important three, five, six words, whatever that number is that's appropriate, we focus in on those ideas. And again, this will be an opportunity, maybe there's some similar words. We can combine some thoughts and ideas. That is absolutely appropriate. I keep saying it, no wrong answers throughout the whole thing. Next slide. So after we do all of that, brainstorm, prioritize, then we will craft that vision statement. So using the place, policy, and program boxes, those prioritized words, use those as a word bank to craft a vision statement. So we would like you all to write down a vision statement and include as many, hopefully all of the prioritized words in that vision statement. So we're starting big, getting more focused, and finally getting to that vision statement. Bobby will help facilitate this. Elizabeth and I will be taking notes and keeping track of time to make sure that we're moving through. And yeah, let's get to work.
Thank you, George. Okay, so, yes. So Elizabeth is going to share the board now, which will be happening electronically. And so she will be able to zoom in so you all can see. And as we work with the council to go through the steps, then Elizabeth and George will be taking notes. And we're going to start, again, I want to remind the council that in these buckets, and I know you have a little version, a paper version at your table, but in these buckets, these six domains, we have taken those foundational elements and we've stated those in each of those buckets and we want that to be your starting point. That is your word bank. So, and what we'll do in the first phase of this exercise is we're going to go by each of the NEX categories. And again, it doesn't matter which one we start with, it doesn't matter, you know, if a particular word or phrase could fit into multiple domains. This is just a way to make sure we are thinking holistically. So we'll start with organizational. And I'm going to ask Elizabeth to zoom in so we can read this. And again, you'll note at the top of each of these, we have information from the 2019 plan. There was a vision statement for that plan and there were design guidelines. And Elizabeth went over those earlier in the presentation. And then in addition to that, we have the city council goals. So those are things that we believe are important to start with. While we are doing a different master plan with the school district no longer being an active partner in that, there are still some very similar goals from the previous plan. So again, to collaboratively develop a community vision and master plan for the Coverley site that is innovative, flexible, and adaptable, we'll work together to support the development of a vision for the future that has the maximum impact for the common good of this community and the generations yet to come. So I would ask you all, you can look at those statements and you can use that as a word bank, or you may have other words. And I know that since you all have many city council meetings and different organizational meetings, that you share one at a time because you need to do that. So I'm just going to ask you to, I guess, raise your hand or turn your button on or whatever it is and share with us any words from these, this word bank or other words that speak to organizational, that speak to you as an organization, that speak to other organizations around the city and in the community. And share the words and then Elizabeth will capture them. Who wants to give us the first word?
Unusually quiet here, colleagues.
I bring it.
I bring it.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm super excited for this conversation. I'm feeling confused about the word organizational. The other five make more sense to me. So could you just give us a few more sentences on what, are we talking about the organizations that might live in Coverley or the organization of Coverley, for example?
It's really anything. It's anything that is an organization. So city council is an organization. A political party is an organization. A garden club is an organization. It is thinking about organizations that exist in the community and how, in this case, what role might organizations have in Coverley. I can think of lots of things. I know that there are, the arts community is getting very organized around the things that they're doing and the ideas that they have, for instance. The Chinese Reading Room is an organization in and of itself. So again, it doesn't really, it doesn't matter what your definition of that is. It's just to be thinking about the roles of organizations in any capacity as it relates to Coverley.
I want to throw something on the table because typically a recreation center is kind of owned by the city, you know, and it's the city's organization. It's the organization that runs it. I just heard somebody, this lady, a kind lady stepped up and said, what if this was a place where it was just a lot of organizations kind of on? I got the feeling of a village, a village of organizations. So that's just two different ways of thinking about what, it gives us a lot of insights about what does it look like, feel like, act like between those two extremes.
So I would say the key words in this word bank here would be collaborative development of a community vision. I would say also work together to support the development of a vision, maximum impact for the common good of the community. Are there any words in those statements? Forget organization. I mean, just look at the words now. Are there any words in those statements that you think would be key for a vision? And remember, you can add a lot.
Keith?
I'd say broadly used.
Broadly used?
Just for one group of people. We want the whole community to have something.
Great. Broadly used.
Yeah, I was going to say something like diversity of occupants. I don't want to call them tenant, but diversity of occupants.
Great.
I got my line.
I didn't say who was first, so go ahead, Pat. Go ahead. Oh, Vicki?
So just picking up on that with, I agree with you on collaborative. I also think complementary would be good. I'm thinking of, you know, old, young, day, night, you know, how we can have complementary groups in there.
That's a great word. Do y'all want me to call on you or do you want to just speak up? This is, this is a challenge to have a conversational activity when you have to follow these.
You can try and do that because you can see everybody.
I can see, okay. Pat, you were going to say something.
Yeah, well, first I kind of have a question because is what's in this box kind of a reference the previous vision? But this is a vision statement on the process as opposed to the outcomes primarily. So this is how we'll collaboratively develop a vision. That's about the process to develop a vision. That's not the vision for the outcome. So I wanted to be more clear, are we talking about a vision for the process or are we talking about the vision of the outcomes we want?
That, I would, I mean, that's a good question. If you were to ask me, I would say the vision would be for the outcome.
So would I. Okay.
So let's focus on that because the process is going to be collaborative. It's, and I think it's great that we're launching the process with the leadership sharing a vision with the community. So outcome, yes.
Under that notion, one of the elements that was mentioned is the multicultural aspect. I'm searching for a less clunky term, but nevertheless, that's what captures it. And I'm struck by, if you go there today and the uses, really, we have a strong multicultural aspect as we do in our community and that's not really represented very much here tonight. And so that's, that's one of the things that I'd be interested in finding a way to have wording that really embraces that.
Great. Councilmember Lou?
I would say explorable and that's in the context of being district-like, being organic, the sense that to get to somewhere you want to go, you have to pass by a bunch of doors and a bunch of signs and a bunch of things of interest. And that those should have open doors or people at several of those doors throughout any time of day.
Cool. I love that. Julie?
I really appreciated what Elizabeth Lexis said about organic, more creative, less of a planned community and more of a small urban area. I'm also deeply interested in the concept Ray Oldenburg pioneered in the field of sociology of a third place. And I think for me, that's going to come up in response to a lot of these, but organizationally, it's, it's what does this destination feel like when you arrive at it? What has it accomplished for you? What are you able to do there? How does it make you feel? I think we want to be sure organizationally that it is set up to invite people to come and pursue various things as opposed to a rigidity or formality, a limitedness. We want it to be a lot of things to a lot of different people.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, let's move to the next one. We're going to, what we know will happen is we'll have a lot of words and then we probably would have fewer at the end. So we'll move quickly through all of these and then we'll come back and revisit them one more time. Our next domain is, I can't see those, oh, social, okay. Social. Social can be any number of things. Social is relational. How do we relate to each other? How do we interact with each other? How do we have fun together? What about social support services? What about opportunities where social gatherings take place in organizations, in clubs, in religious organizations, in, in dance, in arts, in all of those places? So again, we have some word banks, offer wellness opportunities, fitness, athletics, therapeutic programs to support the social, emotional, and physical health of people of all ages and abilities. Implementing housing strategies for social and economic balance. Now, I do understand, I want to make sure everybody knows, we know, housing is not a part of this. What we do know though, is there will be housing in the San Antonio plan and we want to consider what that means with a larger population and how Coverley can serve these new residents as well as the entire city of Palo Alto. Public safety, wellness, and belonging, justice and equity, wellness and joy, community porch, living room. Popcorn words. Keith, you want to go first again?
I'd say.
Do y'all mind if I call you by your first name?
Yeah, first name, please.
Okay, thank you. I'm Bobby. Hi, Keith.
I would say foster social connections.
Foster social connections, great.
Yeah, I would say synergies. And what I mean by that is that if you're, if you drop off your child at soccer practice, you might go in for a swim. If you're going to a painting class, maybe there's childcare. There's things that work together. I was really taken by Tara's comment about covered outdoor spaces and festivals because there could be synergies amongst various artists or things where they use that together. So thinking how, one plus one is three.
Awesome.
Julie, do you have one?
Yeah. I keep ringing in and then turning off my microphone. To build off what Vicki just said, I like the notion of accidental encounters. So you dropped off your kid and you're also going to bump into somebody and then you're going to have a coffee and decide, I want to sign up for that art thing that's happening. I'm reminded of BioX at Stanford, which was a building designed to be at the nexus of the medical school, the biology department, and the engineering area, hoping that if they designed it well, humans would pass by humans they didn't normally work with on the way to a good cafe. And that's exactly what happened. The design of the building facilitated greater, the desired interactions, the desired problem solving. So these accidental encounters that you could have here. I also want to put in, put a star next to what's already up there, community porch slash living room slash boulevard place. You can sort of hang out and know that interesting things are going, you can people watch. Let's put that, people watching.
Cool. That's great. Ed?
Yeah, I want to add, probably not the words, but amenities that sort of draw other neighbors. So we don't want this to be just for people in the south, in that one spot or for, we want people in Crescent Park to say, I love that gym. I want to go to that gym. So amenities that maybe are distinctive in the entire city so that folks would travel there, not unlike a retail store that has certain things that are different than other places.
Ed? I mean, George?
I'll offer a couple. One is relevant for Gen Z and millennials. One is relevant for Gen Z and millennials. I think when we talk about a lot of programs, or sometimes when we think about some of the existing programs, there's a lot that serves seniors, there's a lot that serves school-aged children. And having some flexibility, having the kinds of space that younger, middle-aged people would be interested in, I think is valuable. Things like film screenings or like a pop-up beer garden or, you know, things like that could make sense. I would also say eyes on the street, using this concept from urban planning, just that you should never feel like it's empty. There should always be a, be a mixing of uses such that there's always someone in some part of the, in some part of Coverley at any given time.
Great. Pat?
Yeah, well, one, I wanna echo a couple of my colleagues. Julie had described something, maybe I'd describe as spontaneous. And Ed had talked about what maybe are citywide attractions. And then related to those are, you had up there, I think, joy. And so what constitutes joyful experiences? And some of it is the unexpected and, and so how to incorporate that. And I, I think about, one of the things I've, I've witnessed a number of cases in recent years is unexpected musical performances. That when people are just somewhere and suddenly there is an informal musical performance, people just get incredible joy from that. And then playful. And, you know, we've kind of been dancing around how do we, what part of, what constitutes joy, and that's another part of it. And, and how do we have that for the various generations and those generations to interact? We, we definitely, here in our community, that for, for teens in particular, they don't have a lot of places to go and hang out. But it's not just some place where they go and hang out. It's some place that they go and really experience whatever's joyful to them.
Right. Otherwise, they won't hang out there, right? Okay, let's move to the next one.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, I'm sorry, Julie.
Just wanting to build further on, on that. It occurs to me that the Surgeon General had not yet said loneliness was an epidemic when the last phase of Coverley redesign was happening. We haven't explicitly said combat loneliness. I think all of these, many of these things do. But I think it's important for us to carry that forward as a hoped-for outcome. And to be, and to be curious about, what do the experts say combats loneliness? And how can we ensure that this beautiful thing we create isn't worsening the problem by putting us all in boxes alone? But, so toward that end, I'd like to add as a, as a post-it, in the realm of the organic, the art of the possible, which is a phrase I think I actually have learned from Concordia. What is, to think about, you come to a place, maybe you're not there for a specific class or offering, but you have a sense that I'm gonna be here and the art of the possible. I don't know. Our kids need that less structured, less managed, do this, do that, and just sort of the sense of, this is where humans are. You're not quite sure what's necessarily gonna happen, but you can be pretty confident because the place proves itself to you over and over again that things are possible here and you're gonna leave feeling good.
Great, awesome. Okay, let's move to the next one. Okay, next one is economic. From, again, the word bank there, we have economic development and retail vibrancy, sustainability, justice and equity. Again, economics is, is not just about the money, it's also about the natural environment and, and, yes, and sustainability. So thoughts, words? Keith?
I'll go again. I would say ambitious but realistic.
Oh, great.
Because we almost certainly will be financially constrained. But we want to be stretching our brain and coming up with things that we haven't thought of. We shouldn't resign ourselves to mediocrity.
That's great. George?
I'll take another side to that, thinking about kind of economic activity or potentially cost recovery. So cafe, restaurants, retail services, having potentially multiple spaces for some combination of those. Facilitating rentals, like if, not building anything specific for this, but if possible, configuring some spaces where you could do corporate events or weddings or things that actually recover money. Some other thoughts, night markets, incubators for cafe slash retail concepts. And yeah, that's what I have.
Oh, that's great. Anybody else? Vicki, do you have something?
Yeah, I just think Julie had your light on first.
Oh, Julie, I'm sorry.
No problem, thank you. In terms of access as an economic issue, not an exclusive club, low barrier to entry. I would hate to see high prices to participate in things that are happening here so that, you know, we sort of seem to be welcoming all, but in fact, we're only welcoming those who have economic means.
That's great. Vicki?
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts. One is that it, it should meet the needs analysis and per the earlier discussion, not be duplicative except when it should. Like sometimes it could be appropriately duplicative. I think being really judicious about that would be very economically helpful, both to the tenants and to the city in standing it up. And then, I don't know if this fits here, but I can't figure out where else it fits.
Okay, doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
It's what I would call good, better, best. And what I mean is, I would love to see it, the outcome or somewhere in this process that we say, you know, what would be good? What would be better? What would be best? And then figure out associated price tags and then figure out what the community wants on that because that's just, to me, the economic reality.
Yes, absolutely.
So that's why I think good, better, best.
That's great. Pat, you have anything?
Yeah, I would just like to echo what Vicki had been touching on, which is if this is about, once again, is it the economics of doing the project or the economics of operating it afterward? Because I've heard both.
I'd say it's, it's really all of it. I mean, the vision for what you want Coverley to be has to drive the process because the process will get to that. So just share your thoughts. I don't think you need to.
Well, I, I kinda think for us that there are two different things we're talking about here. And I think we should put them in different buckets. So in terms of the economics of being able to do it, I really share what, what Vicki was getting at, which is that we need to really look at going into this process several different visions depending on what's going to be the voter appetite.
Sure.
Because a lot of, you know, I, I heard a statement at the beginning about a world-class, what was it, project? I've seen a lot of world-class projects mostly left on the drawing board. And I don't wanna see this left on the drawing board again. And so I, I'm really interested in beginning with looking at a range of possibilities. And then we'll probably have an iterative process that will inform us at a certain point in time through polling or otherwise and let us narrow that. But I think we, we're, we're gonna have to start with a range and then gradually narrow it.
Yes. And, and I just wanna add that, and I, and I think it was, really came a lot from some of the comments earlier, world-class does not have to be the most expensive thing. And I think the fact that you've brought that up and that, and that that maybe needs to be a driving factor. How can you have something that's world-class that's not necessarily the most expensive thing, the most expensive materials, the grandest? It can still be world-class. So thank you for that distinction.
Yeah, and I would, on that same vein, say that creativity can be cheap. Buildings are expensive.
That's exactly right. Who, who has not, Ed?
Yeah, a couple of my thoughts are already on here, but I'm trying to think of a, a couple of ways to look at potential revenue opportunities. And one of them might be, just come to mind, like the, you know, Stanford Jazz, they're always run out of space even though they have a lot of buildings. Is that something that we could participate in? You know, an in-town jazz concert to make it easier because there's full parking and so on? And of course, charge Stanford for the, for the privilege of that. So is there ways that we can lease out our facility, when the theater's done, to other, other tenants on short-term basis? That's one sort of thing. And on the other hand, you know, we don't wanna be pricing people out of using this thing. So we'd have to be quite selective on that.
Right. I think we got something from everybody in that one. Let's move on to the next one. Okay, next is physical. High degree of shared-use facilities, maximize green space with, I'm sorry, make it a little bit bigger, Elizabeth. With abundant trees and vegetation, thank you. Safe parking and walking paths that encourage multimodal transit and healthy living, convenient underground parking, climate action and adaptation, and natural environmental protection, flexibility, sustainability, resilience hub. Julie?
Here's where I think the building can reflect and embody council priorities. So there are a couple that are obvious. The climate action and sustainability goals ought to be, the building ought to reflect those commitments, similarly with wellness and belonging. The physical structure of the place ought to be designed with those goals in mind. So back to what I said earlier about Bio-X, I hope the architecture and design of the physical stuff will facilitate, will embody and reflect our values and facilitate human interaction.
Great. Keith?
We're planning this for not just five, 10 years, but for 30 or 50 years, right? So I really think it has to be expandable. We need to have it compact enough so that the next generation has room to expand it down the road. If it's sprawling, we won't, we'll be tying their hands.
I think there's a tendency, as a couple of the public commentators said, to squeeze as much square footage in here so we can keep as many tenants in here. And I get that. On the other hand, as another public commenter said, you know, put trees in so kids can climb them. That is one of the activities that we want happening here is tree climbing or playground climbing or things like that. So I think there's a, a risk in putting too much square footage there. Obviously, we need green space for baseball fields and soccer fields, that goes without saying. But trees are not just pretty, they're part of the activities that'll happen here.
Right. Vicki?
Yeah, a community center, to me, is all around building community health and the many ways that one defines that. So if we think about physical health, the playing fields, I absolutely support keeping as many as we can. We have such a shortage, we're about to get a lot more people down there and children. I really think we need to keep, if not expand, the playing, I should say, right-size the playing field.
There you go.
And, you know, back to the, I said this before, but with the physical, I think that the covered outdoor spaces is a way of having less, you know, doors and windows and walls, but yet it's still in this weather oftentimes effectively an indoor space. So we can think about that physically. I think, as, as was said before, just supporting the multimodal transit, make sure that physically it does that, but not just with bike paths, also plenty of bike lockers and things so that people really find it convenient. And I, I think of this as the physical too. Again, I'm not sure exactly where it goes. But we were talking about youth earlier and I think, yes, we need a youth space, but I think they also want something to do so it's not awkward when they show up and not just a room. And I think we need to ask them what should be in it because, I don't know. But I think, you know, whether it's something active like, maybe bowling is too grand, but I don't want a whole bunch of video games where they sit around and watch each other play. Because I think that physically, we want some space and ask them what it is they want to do in it and create that space.
If I could take just a second, because I think what you said is so important about the youth and about the longevity of this space. Some of you will remember that in, in the way we do this process is we bring community fellows as part of our team. And their role is to help us recruit people to participate, to make those connections to their neighbors, their organizations, their friends, and also to help us facilitate at the table. Happy to say we're in the recruitment process for community fellows. And right now, we think we have at least 11, if not 12, youth that will be part of our fellows team because their perspective is so, so important. So, and actually, one of the fellows, we contacted our previous fellows and one of them, Kristen, was his name? I can't, anyway, one of, one of the fellows who was very active the last time, when I contacted him, he has finished high school and finished undergraduate school and I don't even know if he's, but he's still here in Coverley and he's gonna be a fellow again. So we're super excited about that. Okay. George?
I agree with really everything that's been said. I'll just throw in one thing to contrast the previous statement. I would just say minimal surface parking. And I would not make a hard line on undergrounding the parking, potentially above ground, multiple floors can still make sense. I realize that might be difficult, but yeah, having that flexibility in light of all the costs is something to keep. I'll also say trees. I think we all agree with that, but I don't think it's been said yet.
Yes. Pat?
Yeah, so tagging on to some themes of my colleagues, when we talk about multimodal, I, I kinda, I think of it as being accessible. And so that's not only what we do on the site, but broadening what we're doing to look at our plans to make sure that we have bicycle and pedestrian and transit that support the site and make it accessible other than by car. And right now, we have our bicycle and pedestrian transportation plan that's being worked on. I don't know that that plan is yet in any way thinking about Coverley as it will be versus Coverley as it is.
We are going to meet with them, just so you know, we, in our, in our initial kickoff meetings, we did meet with city departments and we will be meeting regularly to understand where they are in their planning so that we can do the best we can to coordinate this.
And that, that ties in too with, not sure where in our process tonight, but who else really will be participating in these inputs? And we, we heard about our Parks and Rec Commission. We have our, an advisory commission, Palo Alto Bicycle Advisory Commission, payback. We have our safe routes to school. So we do have consultants that are involved with the bike plan, but we have these very important community groups. We have our Planning and Transportation Commission. And so I'm interested in, in that, which, I'll just go a little sideways here for a moment. I think it was Shania who spoke about us taking a humble approach. And as we're talking about this visioning, I'm, that registered for me in that here we... this visioning, that registered for me in that, here we are, seven of us up here, and we're being asked to come up with a vision statement tonight. I feel more comfortable coming up with a draft that I then would like to see the public to have an opportunity to feedback on before we finalize a vision statement, because we have a lot of really people who are engaged and know this, this community center today and have a vision about what it might be, that are more thoughtful on this perhaps than we are. And I'm really anxious to hear from them more than just three minutes at the beginning of the meeting before we settle on a vision statement. And then, back to the physical, I think it was touched on, basically, it's, you know, sustainable, but I think maybe it was Julie also talked about, or you did about solar panels there, and just the concept of it being more of a living lab, which could include, we've had design for a microgrid including that area, but also, it can, it's new kind of use of electrification that I assume will be to not just include it, but to have it be a demonstration, what it's actually doing there. And then, not being kind of too much of a massive and monolithic structures to make it really more human scale. And lastly, on the physical part, to look at this multiculturalism in design and not just in users. And I don't know how we might best do that. I mean, we can do it through art, we can do it through structural design, but to at least think about how does that become part of what we're trying to achieve.
Great. Did everybody weigh in on that one? I think we're at the last one? Two more, okay. All right. Next, educational. Provide a multicultural, multi-generational learning environment, innovation, community porch living room, welcome, multi-generational spaces. And again, you'll see some of these statements, some of these word banks were in previous because they fit in lots of different places. But again, this is just a framework to make sure we're thinking holistically. So through the educational lens, are there any new things, any new words, phrases you want to think about?
Somebody said earlier about how the studios were open so the public could come in. You know, that's an educational concept. So the, I want to be sure that we're talking about it's not classrooms, you know, it's just how can it become a learning center as well?
Vicky?
Yeah, and to follow up on that, it's not just classrooms, but it is classrooms, too, for both the performing and visual arts. And I think we hate to lose that, because I think they're highly valued by our community as learning opportunities. But also, the Friends of the Palo Alto libraries, just going into their book sales or volunteering for them and seeing some of the amazing historic books that get dropped off, I think that's an educational piece. And it was said in the top part, but I don't recall if we've iterated it on these other blocks, but I do really believe that it should be a multi-generational place. And I think that in and of itself is educational for all generations interacting with others. They could find out what they want in the youth room.
Absolutely.
They could find out what I did when I was young. Well, part of it. And also multicultural, I think, is very important. And I think beloved by this city.
Yes, that's a good word. Julie?
You know, we exist in the shadow of a world-class university, and as such, our concept of educational can be limited to that sort of higher-level academia-type exploration, the life of the mind. I think for that reason, the city would do well to expand its notion of what educational means, and I think Coverly could embody that. So if this was a place that recognized that we will expand your mind here, but also allow you to work with your hands and be nourished at the level of spirit and soul and body. So somehow, that education is a place to develop, whether it's your mind, your body, your capacity in other ways.
Love that. Ed?
You have multi-generational leftover from the last time, and that should stay.
Yes.
There's some interesting opportunities, even at the little teen center we're sort of creating downtown, they're going to be seniors having lunch there and teens coming at night once this thing gets done. So that's the kind of intergenerational exchanges, you know, if it's a short day, the kids can help serve lunch to the seniors.
Absolutely. Pat?
Yeah, I'd say I'd want the educational part to be dynamic, and how do we create that? Certainly, technology enables that, that there are things that we could do educationally that are, that are also spontaneous at the same time through just digital means and others throughout that. It, and then, I was also kind of the other end of the spectrum from the digital side, thinking about, at our art center, we have art classes for the community, and the incredible popularity of people who have spent careers in tech going and doing clay sculpting and all the different art forms that they do there is incredible and actually transformative for a lot of these people who've just become incredibly impassioned, and in their whole life, they had never done anything like that. And so we have our artists there, which is a great addition, but we don't have the community participating in art there. And so I'd be interested in a component of that as art education.
Great. Keith?
I'd say outreach to nonprofits. I think external groups are going to have good ideas that we haven't thought of, and we really want to have that dialogue continue and just not fill it up and get static. We really want to have a continual refresh of new ideas coming in.
George?
I would add distributed exhibits. I think somewhat of the Stanford Computer Science Building, where they have little exhibits of computer science history just spread throughout every little stairwell or in random hallways in kind of surprising places. I would, I know physical education has been mentioned here, but I would explicitly also say a gym and rec center, which, something the community is obviously working on. And I also second Julie and Pat's points about education in terms of mindfulness and arts, so yoga spaces, art spaces, potentially learning kitchens, things like that.
Great. Vicky, go ahead.
I already went, but I just wanted to say plus-one to the gym, because I can't believe it hasn't really been mentioned, but I, the only thing I would literally mean plus-one is I would say gyms.
Yes. Did I get everybody on that one? Okay, last one. Cultural. Provides a multicultural and multi-generational learning environment, supports the visual and performing arts, arts and culture, cultural incubator, community porch living room. Now, as I mentioned, as we get to the end, you've said a lot of things, and you might have said some of these things in the cultural category, too. So it's, if you've already said a lot of things and you don't feel like repeating yourself, that's okay, because we're about to synthesize and prioritize words. So anybody want to add anything to cultural? Julie?
Reflects and is responsive to the various communities that make up Palo Alto, by which I'm thinking when we're deciding the programming or the nonprofits or what have you, we ought to take account of who is in our community and how can we be sure that all who are here find themselves belonging in Coverly?
Vicky?
Yeah, this is one where I would definitely say informed by community feedback, because I think what Keith said a moment ago is particularly true here. We don't know what we don't know, and there could be some amazing ideas out there. And the other kind of concept here, I think, is, it was alluded to before in some other categories, but this is where serendipity can come into play. And if you have a lot of different cultural aspects to what's going on at Coverly, there will be these serendipitous fusions or mashups or whatever we call it today, where I think it could, some really interesting collaborations could come about. And maybe even, I think what Pat was alluding to earlier is kind of a flash mob of joyous singers, or who knows?
That's great. Pat?
Sure. So one thing is that I think the cultural intersects with educational. And so one of the things that we in a community like ours, with so many different immigrant groups, we need to be continually educating each other culturally. And it's a joyful experience. At the same time, I have friends that every year put on in their neighborhood a Diwali And the convergence of those cultures is fascinating, but everybody gets just such a kick out of it. So I just want to make sure when we think about the cultural part, we're thinking about how we learn from each other, not just giving each of our identity groups an opportunity to have, continue their cultural experience.
Great. Keith?
I would say sufficient capacity. One of the big risks to art studios and dance studios is they're in the low-rent districts that will be developed in the next 10 years, they'll be replaced by housing. And without that low-rent district, we're going to really be impacted. So we have to take that into account when we're planning the size for this, that we right-size it for the demand that we have.
George?
To be more literal, I would also just add exhibition space. So in addition to studios, in addition to learning, I think about flexible exhibition space, I exist in other cities with rotating exhibitions. I think about spaces like Bergamot Station in Santa Monica, where it is just a giant cluster of art galleries and cultural spaces. And I would also say, kind of, this isn't going to come out right, but like high-value partnerships, like working with Stanford and their amazing art collections at the Cantor and Anderson Collections, and whether some of those could be brought in on a rotating basis, things like that would be interesting to me.
Great. Vicky, do you have another?
Yeah, I just realized, I don't think I've heard yet, you mentioned exhibition space, but performance space, a theater, an auditorium, I think we should have something like that on site.
Ed, did you? Okay.
Can I add?
Oh, Julie, yes, sorry.
Yeah, to these points that have been made, I really see it as so rich with culture that there's always something going on, the performance, the exhibition. So for me, less of a space for that and more of an omnipresent, like you show up at Coverly, you don't know what you'll see, but you're pretty confident there's something. Not, you know, once a month, we have a this, but every day, you know, in the afternoon or evening, there's going to be a something. So a constant presence, a richness of culture that just, you show up and something's going on.
Awesome. Okay, so, we have some great thoughts, some great words here now, a new word bank. And I'm sure many of you, many of you in the audience as well, have been either through your organization, your institution, whatever, you've created a vision statement. A vision statement is not three paragraphs. A vision statement is a statement where every word counts, and it's not a lot of words, but it's something that captures your vision for what the Coverly Community Center will be to the city of Palo Alto and the surrounding area, and visitors to this community center, right? Okay, so.
If I can mention, I was in the background as y'all were brainstorming, so you'll see that these, I started grouping kind of similar ideas and bolding some of the main words based off of these discussions to help with this prioritization. So, you know, everything is still there, just because I bolded or moved it around doesn't mean it should go a certain way, but I figured it would help, you know, this conversation. And of course, there are obvious patterns across the different domains. So I just wanted to mention that, that I did move those around and bold those to help this conversation out.
Thanks. So while you're taking a look at that and studying, and I know you're looking at on your pads, maybe, Elizabeth, if you could focus on two at a time, so people can really see them? And as we're doing that, I wanted to share something I think that is really important that has come up in all of these conversations. And I share this based on our experience and how we do this work. It is next to impossible to develop a plan where you go to 10, 20 different organizations and ask them what they think separately. Because if you're going to do a plan that is going to be something that is built on everybody's interests and ideas and input, people need to talk about these things together. And if you have conversations in silos with like-minded institutions, you still have to find a way to bring it together. So that's why we do the process, where we are inviting everybody to the table to work collectively together in conversation with each other, documenting everything, sharing everything, posting everything, sending it back to everybody, analyzing that information and making sense of it, and then sending it back to you. So I say that to say that is what this process will be like, and we want to encourage everyone, once we launch the first meeting on the 19th of March, to have everybody come together. Now, we do know that it's going to be very important to speak to the consultants and city departments who are doing work, and to find out what's happening in any of those projects that would directly or even indirectly impact this project. And that will be something that we will be doing. But I want to encourage you to invite everybody to participate in this collectively together, because that's, will be the most efficient way and the best way to develop the master plan. And also to remind everybody that the master plan will be a specific roadmap. It is not actually an architecturally-designed plan. That would be the next phase. So just to provide some distinction there. So what we want to do now is where we have three buckets underneath this, place, policy, and program. And we're just, again, we know that in order to develop a master plan and in order to have a functioning Coverly in the future, it's going to be based on a well-designed place, it's going to be based on form follows function, so it's going to be based on designing space that is functional for all of the programs that we know about, and then programs in the future. So flexibility, adaptability is going to be extremely important. And then, policy. And that may or may not be addressed in the vision statement, but we do, you will be needing to think about what is the policy for how Coverly is run, how Coverly is leased. be needing to think about what is the policy for how Coverley is run, how Coverley is leased, and what that all means. So we're going to ask you, and we can just go down the line or you can turn your light on and I'll call you. As you look at those words, we want you to pick one or two words in each of the buckets, your top choices of words. And then we're going to document those below. This is how we start to sort of condense and simplify. Yeah, so we'll, let's, we'll just look at the first two, the sort of orange and the blue. George, you look like you have a word. Do you?
I do.
Oh, Pat does? Okay. Who said I do?
No, I do.
Oh, Ed did. I'm sorry, Ed.
Yeah, I want to go back to that one thing that, so this would be for place, is distinctive amenities to draw people?
Okay.
Is that the kind of thing that fits in place in what you're trying to design?
Yeah. Again, just a word or two, but that's fine. We'll take those words.
Unique amenities. Is that better?
Unique amenities. That's great.
The three. We could take any of these and put them in.
There are a lot of words there and you can't have all of these words in a vision statement. So as you review them, what are the words that are the most important foundational, fundamental ideas?
And you want to take it out of the orange and the blue now only?
I was trying to do the orange and the blue so people could see it, but.
Yeah, okay, just so we know what you're focused on.
Yeah.
I would go for creative.
Creative? Okay. George is, George is capturing those words. Yeah.
Oh, I'd go for multicultural.
There are two Georges here. Okay. Multicultural? Okay.
I'm going to add organic and spontaneous.
Okay. Move over. Let's move over.
Can I add synergies?
We can come back. We just, I just want to make sure we're not just focusing on the first two. We're going to kind of move all the way across and then we'll come back. And so again, the words that are sort of biggest idea, foundational, most important. If you have a word, just, Keith?
If Pat had said dynamic, I think vibrant would be a similar word.
Vibrant, okay. And maybe as you review these words, another word comes to mind that you think would be a bigger, better word. Ed?
How about out of that green one, say balanced needs?
Balanced needs?
Yeah.
I'd say accessible, with the intention that that could have multiple meanings, not only
Oh, yeah.
physical, but getting there, but.
Words that have, that are sort of more comprehensive are good words for a vision statement. So, yeah.
I would say community health.
I'm sorry. Was that you, Vicky, or Julie?
Vicky's saying community health.
Community health?
Health.
Okay.
Julie? The word destination is coming to mind. It's sort of, in and of itself, it's a draw, place people want to be at.
And would that basically capture Ed's concept?
Yeah, I think incorporated, yeah. It's like destination retail. You know you're driving there for some reason. Built into that is you're coming there for some unique amenities. So I think it's workable. You're biking there. That's right. Thank you.
I also like human scale.
Human scale.
Say balanced.
Balanced?
Mm-hmm.
You got that, George?
I really like the concept of village.
Village?
In terms of what the buildings look like, how they're organized.
Any other words?
I don't know how to say this, but when I see informed by community feedback, I think community-driven or the beloved by the city. I don't know what the word is for that, but I think responding to needs, not just something so we can say we did.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what word or phrase that is.
Throw that down.
Responsive to community needs, wants.
Yeah.
Bobby, are we just filling that one bucket of place right now or are we doing all three?
I'm categorizing.
You are?
I'm categorizing them as we're saying it. Again, it's the framework, so the categories aren't, you know, incredibly important. It's just to make sure that we're covering all of our bases. But we will review it once we get through this prioritization phase.
I'll add then third place.
Third place, yes. Any other words just feel really important?
I'll add multi-generational if it hasn't been added already.
Multi-generational? Keith?
I would say realistic again. I mean.
Realistic?
Our eyes are going to be bigger than our wallet and we're going to have to make some hard decisions and that's going to be hard.
Mm-hmm.
I really like Vicky's word beloved up there in the purple. I know you said it recently in terms of, is it responsive? It's not just a bunch of stuff, but the community loves it. I do think beloved is a very valuable word to have.
That's a great word. Okay. Are y'all struggling? Because we can go to the next phase. Now, here's your charge. And again, if we were all sitting around a round table and talking, this would be a little bit easier to do. But I'm going to ask each of you individually to look at these words and write a statement.
And what?
Write a statement individually. You don't have to use all the words. Some of these words might inspire another word. Take these words and write one, two, three sentences that you think could be the vision for the new Coverley Community Center. We're going to give you three minutes and then we're going to hear what you each have to say. And then we're going to figure out how to find consensus from six. Oh, okay. If people are ready, Pat, you look like you're ready. You ready? He's just dying to say it.
I didn't think I'd get there and maybe I haven't, so.
Oh, okay.
Sorry?
I want you to wait. You disturb the study hall if you say yours now, so. How are we doing? Now, what we're going to do, because we do want to get everybody out of here on time, is we're going to have each of you share. It doesn't have to be perfect. It's okay. Elizabeth is going to write them. And as she does that, George is going to try to synthesize and see how that goes. Again, if you were all sitting at a round table talking, we could, we could have this happen, but we'll, we'll make it work. Can we start sharing now? Okay, Pat, you were the first one finished. You get to go first.
A creative, vibrant, multicultural destination that brings joy to all generations.
Ooh.
Okay, we're done.
It's kind of, it's kind of magic, the way this works. It really is. Okay. George, you want to go next?
A unique multicultural village that is accessible to all, acknowledging cost and space constraints.
Okay. Wait a minute, Vicky. Got to make sure she can write that down. You good? Okay. Go ahead, Vicky.
So our community center will be a unique and beloved destination that balances our community's wants and needs to provide a vibrant, organic, and healthy experience where spontaneous, multicultural, and intergenerational interaction and learning happen. I can send that to you if you'd like.
Wait, okay. You're going to have to read that again, Vicky.
It's time to wordsmith that one.
I literally can't send it to you if you'd like. I didn't quite, I don't know if I used.
Oh, you're scoring this too?
Can you restate that after wants and needs, council member?
Absolutely. To provide a vibrant, organic, and healthy experience where spontaneous, multicultural, and intergenerational interaction and learning happen. With joy for Pat. Sorry, I know it was long.
Can I request that you repeat the part after organic, healthy experience?
Where spontaneous, multicultural, and intergenerational interaction and learning happen.
Got that? Okay. Ed, are you ready?
Yeah, first draft.
Okay.
Coverley is a destination community center providing a balance of multi-generational activities, including the arts, athletics, and performances to a diverse demographic in a human-scale building integrated with scalable open space and landscape.
Got that? Okay. Keith?
Create a vibrant and beloved facility that provides a balance and unique amenities to improve the lives of the entire community.
Okay, wait. You're going to have to do again a little bit more slowly.
Create a vibrant and beloved facility that provides balanced and unique amenities to improve the lives of the entire community.
Okay, Julie?
A beloved village where all belong, rich with unique offerings to grow your mind, body, and soul. I know soul might be a little controversial. We did not mention soul. I was just trying to figure out what went with mind and body.
You don't have to qualify. It's all good.
Just acknowledging there's sort of a Genesee Qua piece to that.
Can I ask just really quickly? You all can see these on your screen, correct? Do we need to make them, I can't see what you see. We need to make them a little bit bigger when, so let's just make it a little bit bigger, Elizabeth. So, yeah. And then maybe we could, you read them. And George is going to be doing some synthesizing here, but yeah, if, can we just, we're just going to go down the line. And if you could all say which, which one you kind of like. I'm trying to move them and you know what I mean? Y'all know what I mean. It's not a contest either. We're all doing this together openly. We're sharing with everybody. Or maybe just.
Ultimately, don't you want to combine some of these thoughts into one as opposed to just pick one and wordsmith it?
No, totally. Exactly. That's, that is what we're going to do. George is working on something.
What I'll do is I'll start changing the font colors of words that are repeated in different ones. And maybe we could start there and start calling out those common, common ideas.
destination.
A lot of these seem to start with a unique and beloved multicultural destination, and then we diverge a bit.
Right. Unique and beloved multicultural destination. We can start there. Does it, let me ask this question. Does it need to be unique or, and/or creative? Oh, Palo Alto's so unique.
When I say unique, I think of providing needs that aren't provided elsewhere in the city.
And that is in there a number of times, so that's great. A unique and beloved multicultural destination, dot, dot, dot.
Well, we talked multicultural. Only a couple of us talked about multi-generational. Is that something we want to make sure is there?
Yeah. Are y'all good with that?
Here's my concern. I want to, absolutely, I want it encompassing of multicultural, multiple cultures, all generations. I worry that when we start listing the ways in which we want to be inclusive, we create an inevitably limited list. And so that's why I defaulted to where all belong, rather than listing the various ways in which we could categorize who we mean by all.
How do y'all feel about that? George?
I agree with that. I think also language like accessible to all makes sense. I'll let some others respond to that point before going on a tangent.
I agree with the concept, but I still think it's nice to call out multi-generational, because people don't always know if they think it's a gym, or they think it's something that's not necessary for little ones and elders. There's a couple. If somehow we could call out a couple, but then make clear it's all, but I mean, I don't need that. That's what occurs to me.
I get that.
And maybe rather than the multi, we just say all cultures and generations belong.
I like the simplicity of that, too. So.
Cultural and generational, not multi, taking multi off.
We don't have vibrancy, which is one, two, three, at least three occasions. So it's.
Could it be of unique, I mean, a vibrant, unique, and beloved destination? Or did you have another place to put that, Pat?
No, but it's unique and destination getting at the same thing. It's a destination because of its uniqueness for our community, so I don't know that we need to have both of those.
I think we need.
What do you think about that, Keith? Because you were the one that brought that up.
I think that is a little redundant. We certainly, we're trying to trim here, and if we can trim things that are redundant, we don't lose content.
Just want to raise a question about this beloved. I mean, that's kind of a big promise, and this is a visionary statement. It's a visionary statement, but we want to deliver on our promise. Would it be so bad if it wasn't, quote, beloved, but everybody gathered there because it was so just doggone fun, meeting people?
It's really adequate, yes.
I think it'll, I think there is value in being aspirational in a vision statement. I get the point, but I think at this juncture, where we're throwing something together that the community is going to respond to, it might be nice to test whether they think that's actionable. So I would vote for beloved to stay in. And this may not be the time for it, but I'll just say it because I'm on the mic. I feel like we're missing something to describe what goes on.
That's exactly where.
Is that where you're going, Vicki? So there's a lot of things in here, amenities, activities, experience, offerings, and I feel like we have to land on a word or two to sort of get at all of those things, from the gym to the makerspace, to the dance, to the performing arts.
Thank you for that transition. That was exactly what I was thinking, is, you know, there's a lot of places, narrow places, that this could fit, but we have a lot of stuff. How about a vibrant and beloved destination that promotes wellness where all cultures and generations belong? Because that would be, you know, I would tend to say health, but we've sort of centered on wellness with our priorities, and that covers physical, social, mental, all of that.
Yeah, but it doesn't cover athletics, which is a big part.
Oh, that's a top one I think of. Wellness.
Wellness.
Yeah.
Health.
Physical wellness. That was the number one.
I think if you start getting too specific, then you have to list everything. So you would have to say athletics, and somebody might want you to say, well, what athletics? And you'd have to list all the athletics, and then you'd have to list all the dance. And so, again, the vision is that, and then the programs, and maybe the design principles get into the more specificity about, you know, the actual programs in place.
You going to say health and wellness? Would that work for you better? Or is that too many words?
Yeah, that's right.
What do you think of well-being versus wellness?
What about well-being?
I mean, wellness seems more narrow than well-being.
Well-being is a bigger word, I think. It kind of incorporates all of that.
I still think you look at this and you don't know what's there. And from a gym to a cafe to a live performance of an a cappella group, I feel like we need three more words, like, somewhere in here, like, activities, amenities, and offerings. So a vibrant and beloved destination with activities, amenities, and offerings that promote health and well-being where all generations and cultures belong. Suggest that.
How do y'all feel about that? Say it again, Julie.
That's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, I think that adds the what is there.
I do personally think health is subsumed under well-being. I think, I don't think we need both health and well-being. I think we know that well-being is our physical bodies, our mental health, our sense of self, our thriving. Just to save words, I would take out health and. I do see joy. I don't know if there's a joy or fun factor, if we were, if y'all wanted to replace health with joy or fun, especially with a lot of talk about multi-generational kid-focused things, that sort of thing.
Good idea.
I think joy is part of well-being, but the group seems to want joy. I'm troubled when you remove health, because apparently it's connoting more of the physical, athletic piece to some, and I, you know, well-being can be a, I mean, I don't think you can have well-being without your physical health, but, I don't know. That's just my own personal preference.
You oftentimes hear health and well-being together, and I think that is something people do in general, feel like if you say both of those things, it's all-encompassing. So.
To me, that reflects a time when we didn't include mental health and well-being in health.
True.
So we had to add that, and I think now we know better than that. But I wouldn't want, if, as a matter of generation, that isn't true, you know, we certainly agree, we want people to know there's a gym there.
We're also going to get this back with comments, right, from others, so we get close. So, I mean, well, let's see. Where are we? Can you read it, George? I mean, or just say it out loud?
A vibrant and beloved destination with activities, amenities, and offerings that promote joy and well-being where all cultures and generations belong. I think that reads well as a vision statement of what we ultimately want. I'm not sure how useful that would be, this vision statement would be for workshops, or messaging, or other kind of levels of brainstorming. So, to the extent that we could, or I'm curious what Concordia's, or what your perspectives are here, about what makes a actionable vision statement that people will actually respond to and use, like, what level of specificity we should think about in terms of using the word village to denote something about the design and atmosphere and scale, or whether we try to state some level of ambition, or constraints, or kind of other things like that. Like, what, how useful would this vision statement be for the community outreach and planning going forward?
Well, I think that you, as the leaders right now, who have, you know, established this process to take this, hopefully, to a successful implementation, by this vision statement, you are acknowledging your support and your vision for this. We do intend to take this to the community. We won't, we have three meetings to accomplish a lot, and we know that this is, this is a process that has time constraints, and we want this to be successful. And so we have a lot to do in those meetings, so we don't want to spend, you know, the whole first meeting wordsmithing with 250 people a vision statement. So, we do, we will have an activity for them to do for a short period in the beginning of the meeting, so we could take this and do that activity, and then bring it back to you for your final review and edits to move forward after the first meeting. It's kind of what we were thinking.
See, I think a vision statement is at 30,000 feet, and I think you've covered it. I think there are also a lot of qualities in here that we don't want to lose. So I think we should take it back and try to figure out how we don't lose the village idea, and we don't lose some of these other words that I think are, I mean, they bring more life to, or more detail to, I think that's what we're struggling with right now, because you can't really have a vision statement that includes 30 words. So I feel like that you've nailed it as a vision statement, but I do feel your desire to not lose a lot of these other qualities, so I think it's going to be on us to try to figure out how to make sure we carry that, all of those qualities, also to the community in the first, in the next meeting.
And lastly, I'll add that we will also have reconfirmed the community-led design guidelines, which would support the vision statement. So it's kind of, you know, that, those functional planner ideas, we will cover as well.
Julie?
I've kind of tried to scan it for what is missing, knowing that it is a small number of words. I do want to see how my colleagues would feel about two more words.
Okay.
Because a workshop, you might take a Cubberly to learn something practical, or a skill you're trying to acquire, may not be reflected in promoting joy and well-being. So I suggest that after that promote, we say that promote learning, comma, growth, comma, joy and well-being. To me, that then spans the greater spectrum, from the cognitive things to the bodily things. You might learn CPR here, and you might, you know, have a tarot card class, and I feel like learning and growth get at that.
I think you could get by with one of those words. If I were going to pick one of the two, I'd probably say go with learning.
Me, growth was getting at the ways in which your body is going to get more fit and more capable.
As we finish up commenting on that, just pointing out that we're over by 12 minutes already, and we still have to do the recap and next steps, so.
Okay. Well, I think you all have done an incredible job. Are we okay with this for now?
Any other comments on Julie's, Ed? Then we can just leave it for now? Yeah.
Okay. Again, I think this is, you've done a fantastic job in a scenario like this, that you've, you know, you've nailed it in a really good way. And so we will take this to the community, and again, we'll elaborate with the design guidelines to get at some of the things that you spoke of, George, I think are really important. So, next steps? Oh, Ed, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So actually, if I could just at least prompt the question, Mayor and Council, would you like to vote on that statement to provide that level of confirmation, or would you rather proceed based on the consensus, as was, I think, described to this point? Really, your call.
I heard a consensus, but no opposed, we just voted.
No opposition to not taking a vote. I love that.
So who wants to recap next steps? Ed, are you going to do that, or?
Yes, we have a slide for that, yes. Could you pull up the presentation one more time? There it is. Yep. Oh, never mind. You want me to do it? Okay. Okay, yes, the next steps are the community meetings. Our first meeting, we actually have a date for that. It will be March 19th, and that's where we will focus on vision, programming, and place-making. And again, we will do those activities based on what we have done in the past, and what might be different now, and what the needs would be given the time that has passed since then. We will have community meeting number two will focus on three concept options, and meeting, I'm sorry, meeting two will be three concept options. Meeting three will be program organization, circulation, and green space. We are working with the city staff right now around multiple activities and meetings and subcommittees, so we have not confirmed those dates yet for meetings two and three, but that will be confirmed very soon, and then that will all be available on the website, the city website. And then the council, then the community presentation of the master plan will be sometime in the late fall, early winter of 2025, and then the council's consideration out of adoption of the master plan, and the sequel process will be the first quarter of 2026. Other community engagement efforts, we'll be doing pop-up events, and I had mentioned to you all that we will be having the community fellows. We are working to have 20 community fellows. Most of those would be youth here in the community, and they will be doing some activities at events around the city, trying to touch all areas of the city to let people know about the process and to encourage people to participate. We will have online and in-person surveys, and then we have the application process for community fellows, and the deadline for that is February 20th. And there are some cards at the table over there by Amanda that give information, that specific information right there, if you want to grab one on the way out. Let's see. And then the council, Cubberly Ad Hoc Committee is another committee, a community engagement opportunity. opportunity. And these discussions will be open to the public, and offer another option for public support to participate. And then there is the project website, citypalowalto.org/coverleyproject. And, yes, George?
You said that most of the community fellows would be youth. What does most mean here? I want to make sure it's--
Well, I'm sorry. We have, right now, we have 11 youth that have signed up. So, and I've read the applications. We're going to do interviews with everybody who's signed up. My, my initial take is that every one of these youth are highly qualified and motivated and would be a great asset. We have three fellows from the previous process, and we have four other adults, 25 and older, who have signed up. And so we're going to do an interview process after the deadline, and we'll be reaching out to others to fill those last few slots.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions on your slides here. When is this pop-up tabling? Where is that on the timeline?
Kristin?
Sure. So we don't have those necessarily scheduled out yet. We are working on our bigger schedule. I'll give an example. We do have a multicultural event coming up in the end of March. And this would be a great opportunity to have a table with an exercise to ask people what a multicultural community center looks to them. So that's an example. So those will be scheduled as different events and opportunities come up.
Okay, another timeline question, which I'm sure is quite an estimate at this point. But at what point would we have any sort of structural diagram to show to folks that this is kind of what we're thinking of, is how it's going to look?
So, community meeting number two, we will actually have three concepts that we'll develop. And we'll go through a process in that meeting to determine, you know, what people like, what is resonating with people. And then, and then after that, we're going to focus on the program organization, and circulation, and green space, to really highlight that. And then in the late fall, early winter, will be the presentation of the master plan.
And I can add to that, Mayor--
Go ahead.
--that we are working on a comprehensive schedule from now till November 2026. That also includes things like polling when we go to different committees, when we go to council. So we're hoping to have that finalized by the end of next week. And I'll talk to the city manager at Chicada, and we'll decide the best way to communicate that to the council.
Okay. And then another timeline thing, and then I'll let some of the people ask questions. When do we get to the point where we're energizing the community to get excited about this, and learn more of the details, and so on? Where does that come in?
Well, actually, starting right now. We've had a meeting with the bond council, and again, with many city staff. We've had meetings already with the existing tenants at Coverley. So this launches the process. And with you working on the vision statement, we hope to have many, many, many people participating in the meetings. And again, for those who are unable to come, for one reason or another, we will have opportunities online for them to participate, and then at these pop-up events. So we will get the word out in every way possible. Again, every single meeting will be documented. We will have a meeting summary document that, that shares all the data. It shares our analysis of, of that data, both literally and graphically. And that is something that will get posted on the website, and something that will be sent to, I mean, all of the listserv across the city, anybody who has signed up and is participating in the meeting. We'll be reaching out to all the organizations that are in the city and asking them to share that information with their, their listservs, their community members, any and every way that we can, to make sure we're touching everybody.
Yeah, Vicki?
Yeah, I'll give the city manager a response before I--
Sure, please, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. My question, and it may be to staff, for all I know, is when, getting back to my good, better, best comment, and associated costs with each, I might only want the good, depending on cost, or I might want the best, if it seems affordable. And then part of that depends on what the community wants. So at which point do numbers, dollar numbers, get associated? And at which point do we poll? And does that, those, when do those two things wrap into this?
Well, I can't tell you about the polling, because I'm not the expert in that, but that we will be coordinating with them. But once we get between meeting two and three, where we actually have something concrete, we actually have cost estimator that will be part of our team. So they will be bringing some cost estimates based on where we are at that point. So when, when you're looking at the concepts, you're not just looking at what you like to look at, you're also considering the economic impact of it.
Just quickly on that, though, the three options, are they building one on another, or are they parallel alternatives? You see what I mean? Like, is it different styles of things?
We try to make them significantly different. And so one of them might be good, better, best, and, or have qualities of good, better, and best. Because we need people to make decisions that include economics, include size, include layouts. And in the last time we did this, there was a question brought up earlier about architectural style. We had a meeting where we actually put up mid-century modern, and, and the Spanish colonial, and, and traditional. And, and people made a choice. And so that's why the buildings look like they look, is because more people said they wanted mid-century modern. So all of those are concepts that we're going to be dealing with in meeting number two. And there will be some options in meeting number two that will be more expensive, less expensive. Village concept, for example, is a great idea. It increases the exterior surface wall, so it's going to cost more money. So we want to be sure everybody has all that information when we, when we're looking at those three options, so that we can--
But I'm afraid with the three options, pardon me, if, if there are too many different variables between them, it's not, we're not going to get at the critical question. So in other words, if we figured out first that everyone prefers Spanish colonial, then we can still look at good, better, best of that type.
Right, right.
Whereas if maybe you really want the swimming pool and the whatever, but it doesn't look the way you want, how do we discern that all at once?
Well, in the master plan, it, it really needs to be, if you will, generic enough. I mean, this is a master plan. This is not architectural design. So in this process, we will have to, again, be in consultation with, with city staff and bond council, and council, and understanding the polling that they're doing, and having that inform the process as well, and guiding what it is we're discovering.
Okay, that, that's helpful, to say it's more generic, because I think that's the only way we can then figure it out. Okay.
Yeah.
It's, it's not the final look. It's more of a flavor or a direction that it'll go in. Once the master plan is finished, and the money is on the table, and everybody's ready to go, an architect will be employed to take it to the more detailed level. So this is a master plan.
So the numbers come in around meeting two?
Yes.
With some options. And what I was going to contribute was actually not directly related to that, but perhaps. And it's to reference the ad hoc. The Coverley ad hoc description here is, is pretty general, largely to maintain flexibility, because we weren't sure exactly what would come out of tonight. And so with that, I wanted to note that next Monday will be your next opportunity to speak to the role of this ad hoc, along with the other committees, as a part of the priority objectives discussion. And we know that all of the committees are also now having meetings that are being scheduled that will allow us to have greater definition on how the committees will then be able to contribute on topics like the range of options that come back to council for discussion.
And who has control of the polling? The ad hoc, or staff, or?
Well, the polling, as we have done, if you use the example of our business tax, we'll, we'll take a similar approach of starting off general, looking for the areas of interest. And then we'll inform our ability to bring that information back ultimately to the council for your decisions on what is included and the relative financial feasibility.
I'm sorry, wouldn't that happen when, in this timeline?
It really hasn't been detailed. As, as you're seeing now, and I think was presented earlier, there's a general schematic of the schedule, and that's being put together in more detail as we speak.
Okay. I guess I was asking conceptually, like, what do you want done before you ask the public through polls?
So on Monday night, we have our consultant contracts with the polling consultant going to council. And so they're not completely engaged yet. So we have a general idea, but we want to confirm that with our polling experts.
Okay. I think I'm not asking the question well. I was just wondering, do you want it after presentation of the master plan, or before? That's my question.
It's really going in parallel, recognizing that the, the polling will attempt to reflect the citywide audience, citywide voters' audience. We want to test the, the confirmation of what would be in the program, rather than a specific plan. It's the, at least initially, there's not the expectation that they'd be doing polling on a, on a specific plan for the site.
I see. All right. Thank you.
Julie?
Thank you. Apologize for contributing to the meeting going long. I didn't know what the end time was. I assumed this was a three-hour meeting, given how important and rich this is. I just want, as the chair of the ad hoc, I want to offer gratitude to staff and Concordia, and the public, and my colleagues, for spending this time tonight on Coverley. Few topics get a dedicated meeting. And it shows, I think, how focused and committed and excited we are, that we have this opportunity in front of us. The timeline officially launches tonight, and some would say it's ambitious, some would say that's a nice word for tight. It is a tight timeline. There is a ton to do, and it's going to take all of us to carry this ball over the line. Those of us on the ad hoc, that would be Keith, and Pat, and myself, are excited to stay close to it, to keep council connected and involved, as the community has these vital conversations. I would ask everyone in this room, tonight, everyone watching us now or later online, clearly you care about Coverley. That's why you've invested this time with all the other things in your life. You're here, participating in this. So I encourage everybody listening to share your enthusiasm for the project, share your sense of this, share your sense of what's next. We, let's have a robust community conversation and process to come up with this master plan, and then ultimately to make the case that it should be funded through a bond measure. All of that is in front of us, and it is going to take all of us doing our part in order to achieve it. I, for one, am incredibly excited, not daunted by the task, but totally jazzed and excited, and really grateful that in the room right now is Alison Cormack, former council member, who brought the library bond over the line in 2008, with then-mayor Larry Klein, who was here earlier. These two are the ones we have to look to, to provide the example of how it gets done. It's, it's something that happens once every now and then. This is our time. It's our turn. We're fortunate to have elders to learn from.
Okay. Is that it from staff?
I think that covers all the material we had. I'd just like to reiterate the enthusiasm. This has been an important step. And again, it really sets the tone for our moving into the community engagement. So thank you, City Council.
Okay, thanks to staff and obviously the, the public. And yes, we have a lot of work to do. All right. We stand adjourned.